Okay, ready?
Now being recorded.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Hi, guys. How do you want to hold you safe? Just today, we'll call the meeting to order. And just so everyone knows, this is a remotely recorded meeting in accordance with the governor's guidelines and open meeting law due to the COVID-19 pandemic. There's no flag, so we're gonna pound that. But we're gonna go into the three old business. We discuss that COVID-19 update. I know we've created locally an opening committee. The state also has an opening committee that will not be reporting till the 18th, which is the projected day that we were supposed to open. So I kind of have a feeling unless we get some guidance very soon prior to 18th, as we're not gonna open up much of anything on the 18th. The basic guidelines for any of the businesses, and I'm sure the state will be choosing which ones that they want to open, are wearing a mask whether inside or outside, maintaining six-foot social distancing, sanitizing, cleaning surfaces of your establishment, hand washing, personal hygiene, all forth. And Todd, and we've got something for local committee, some recommendations, and maybe we can build upon that if anybody has any suggestions. So do you have anything that has?
Did you guys get that email from Ron O'Connor?
Which one?
Well, the one that he goes through the retail food and almost like that, the four phases. Which one did you get recently from Ron O'Connor? Because it's a lot of guidance documents regarding reopening.
Yes, I did get that one. I don't think that we should take any action locally until we find out after the 18th what the state is doing, because I mean, we could vote on something now and then it's gonna be null and void if the state supersedes, you know, what we've recommended. So I know I've asked repeatedly to find out information specific to like summer camps and little leagues and things like that, sporting programs for the summer. And every time it's been asked, we've been told that we will find out after the 18th, that guidance will be sent out after the 18th. So I would personally prefer to hold off on making any recommendations or policies or procedures regarding any type of reopening or allowance of reopening or anything like that until after the 18th, when we get guidance, more guidance from the state.
Yeah, I agree, because that way we can see what's in place and then we can always be more stringent if we wanted to, or what applies to us and what doesn't.
Yeah, Todd, would you anticipate having the local opening committee report? Well, or recommendations?
I think we're going to be using. Having another meeting sometime soon. We met today with Council on Aging for primetime. And basically, I told them that they are closed indefinitely until we get some better information. I mean, they're not gonna be part of Phase One, Two, or Three. In fact, I doubt they're even gonna be able to open this year because of the expected bounce back in the fall. So we're kicking around dates. Mallory has been remotely participating in these meetings. We've been talking to different departments one-on-one and trying to get what each department needs. The hope is that we can separate some people. There are some people in Town Hall that are in close quarters and we're working on that. I believe this Friday, we're supposed to be getting shields installed on the counters so that there'll be protection from the public. I think what's gonna end up happening is we're gonna push back our opening date till May 26, probably. And we might even be open only limited hours in that first week or two kind of thing. And we'll be doing split shifts for some people in Town Hall. But that's for Town Hall reopening, that's what we've been discussing. Library is gonna be like curbside only, like they're not gonna be allowing people to come in. What else? And yeah, so as soon as we hear from the governor like about churches or retail or whatever, that's when we'll have to worry about them, so.
Okay. Yeah, I will agree with Matt and Kevin also that until we get the guidance, other than just stating it's gonna be in four phases, exactly what we're doing, we might as well hold off, so.
I know there's a question about parks and rec, and I'm not sure as to what level they're looking to reopen. I don't have an issue with people using, you know, like the field like that, provided it's, you know, personal, you know, I wanna walk for a walk or I wanna bring, you know, the kids and go for a walk or something like that. You know, I don't think that there should be any allowance for any like formal sports at this point or anything like that. You know, and the playground is still obviously in question. You know, I probably, again, with the playground, I would wait until after the 18th to find out what the state feels they're doing. But, you know, I don't think people should be chased off, you know, the track behind Town Hall or something like that, you know, if you're taking a walk, as long as they're doing so safely, you know, or not having a big congregation of people. You know, if people are allowed to go and play around a golf, I don't see why we can't allow, you know, a family to go and take a walk or, you know, a couple to go take a walk or something like that on the field, so I don't have a problem with that.
One of his, one of Mr. Ryan's concerns was like the playgrounds, like plastic slides and such. We're not sanitizing any of that stuff right now. So we gotta be careful about letting, opening the playgrounds.
Yeah, I think at this point, the playground should say goals, because it's gonna be very difficult to try and get sanitized and like that.
What about the basketball court?
That's, I'd say the same thing.
Well, that's very touchy also, because if you have 10 people that are playing five-on-five in the game, they're in close quarters. We should be able to open the tennis courts because there's enough distance that people can play on either side of the courts. So that shouldn't be a problem, just opening just that one side. But basketball and things like that, because I'm anticipating getting calls from people that we've already booked the field for for Monday night softball games, things like that, where it's gonna be possibly impossible to be able to do that, because how are you gonna be able to social distance during a ballgame?
Yeah, I don't think any, the field shouldn't be open for any like formal types of sports, things like that at this point. Again, if, you know, we get word differently after next Monday, we could go from there, but.
I know that, you know, the local board of health is, of course, is waiting for the governor to make his decision on what they're gonna do on the opening of the phases on the 18th. So, you know, we understand that from our perspective, and I understand that the board of health is in complete control, which they should be. And of course, we're gonna go on to local recommendations of what the governor says, that he sends down to a local board, so that's what we have to go by. So if it does come to the case where certain areas have to be, continue to be closed, if we could update some of the information that's out there for people, signage, that type of thing, that's, you know, closed until further notice, that type of thing. So that's something we're gonna have to look at also. We do have temporary signs up for now, and I'm sure the governor's guidance is going to change between now and the 18th, so.
I have a feeling next Monday, we're gonna be very busy. Yeah, so we'll.
Yeah, I'm sure. I don't envy you people at all, honestly.
But it's not like it's just everything is gonna open up. This is gonna be, this is gonna take some time.
Okay, can we move on?
I know that, you know, we're discussing some topics here. I'd like to just bring up the transfer station quickly, because I have everybody here from the board of health. I will tell you this, 98% of the residents that come in are wearing masks. If I ask them to don a mask, if they're close by with someone and sending something into the dumpsters, they'd be very good about that. So we really do have some good people that live in town. They're really listening to directions, they're following directions, and they're being safe also. Now, on my own personal behalf, it's true, I heard through Todd, and he recommended this to me, is that it makes zero sense for an individual to wear his pair of gloves all day long, because you're just transferring things back and forth. So you better not just washing your hands. I never tried to tell everyone that I know what to do the same, so. But again, Tom, sorry, go ahead.
No, you have the hand washing station there, right?
Yes, I do. I have my hand sanitizer, plus there's also a bathroom that's near that's utilized. There is soap there, the hot water works fine, and that's.
That's in the old animal shelter?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Are you, is everybody ready to move on?
I am. So if you're done with me, I'm gonna head out and I'd just like to say this. Of course, we're gonna wait for the guidance that comes down from the governor on the 18th. And then the local B O H is gonna take care of everything from there. So I'm just waiting for guidance from, for you to continue. And Todd has been very good with everything that's going on. Roz has done, you know, a lot of the legwork also, so my hat is off to the government.
But I do believe the playgrounds need to be closed for at least another week. And I think, you know, we may have to have another board of health meeting after the 18th in order to address some of what the governor's come up with, so.
That's what I was gonna, that's what I was gonna say. Maybe if you're available next week, if you can all meet up again.
Yeah, absolutely. I would love to, if you guys keep me in the loop.
The caller number, yeah.
Yeah, it was just, you know, it happens. But this is all new to everyone, to use the Zoom, that type of thing, so.
Just so make it May 20th. May 20th, we have a planning board, a couple of public hearings, so.
Yeah, and we're gonna be doing that through Zoom. Perry's already sent that information out to us, so we'll be square. So I've been, you know, again, listening to all the guidance that I've been getting from your directives, so that's all we can do to go forward.
And thank you for working at the transfer station and doing what you're doing, because obviously, a lot of people are bringing a lot of stuff. It's been very busy. We've had a lot of slips coming in, so.
Trying to cut that off. I'm sorry, Tom.
No, we'll keep you in the loop.
Great, thank you. Thanks again. Kevin, thank you. Tom, thank you. Have a great night, be safe. I can't wait to see plenty in person in the future, so. Thanks, guys.
Thanks for coming down.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, be safe.
Take the rock out of the door, please.
All right, moving on to 3B, the FEP grant. Who wants to bring us up to speed?
All right, I will, so.
I know that Tom, Tom had sent me some information regarding signage and that type of thing, but I don't know if the health department is under the spending freeze or they're allowed to spend monies out there, because by the record, we just can't make any purchases right now because we're on hold. So if we can get appropriate signage out, it's, Todd had said to me, that would be great, if that's possible. It was, it just tells you that we social distance, wear a mask if you're with someone. Not to touch surfaces.
Tom sent us these, and I was like, oh.
A couple of signs down for copying.
And put them up like we did the, but it didn't, I didn't have anything about washing your hands or sanitizing.
Might have to remind me.
Yeah, I don't thought.
I don't think Mallory's gonna want to spend money, but I mean, I could print these and laminate some.
Yeah, I'd like to work, and I think I have a hand washing one, I just, you're gonna have to remind me.
We have the one for the masks.
Because, like you said, most of the people that do watch the track, they're pretty sensitive. Right, and most of them are families anyway. So that's the thing, you just, you know. I know that Tom, you had talked about a situation on a boat ramp. There was a bunch of people. They found out that that was a reveal, a gender reveal body that was held at a residence that was close by, that's why it was cause of that. Other than that, I'm ready to go.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
All right, so I've shared my screen with you. This is the spreadsheet for tracking the grant. If you can see way over on the right side, you'll see $4,500 that we got on March 26 and another $4,500 we got on April 23rd. So right now, we have a total of $9,000, which you'll see at the bottom, kind of to the right there, it says allowances. So when we put it in, they gave us percentages for how much was salaries and components of supply. We reached out to them and they told us we can move some money around, and they've authorized that. We've been tracking all of Laurie's time, which is the column far to the left for the nurse, Laurie DeSmaris. And you can see her hourly rate and her total. Next column is me, which we're only putting in for overtime and additional hours. And then the office manager for her, additional hours and overtime. And so we've got our running total, and right now, we've used $9,000 of the $9,000. We're expecting a third round of $4,500. Biggest expense we have here, if you look on the supply column, which is the second column from the right, it says that we spent $3,860 on Code Red. That includes the $2,500 for the first year subscription. These were the flyers that went out, printing these flyers and mailing to every resident in town was the extra $1,360. And the television is a television we now have here in the break room, which is a smart TV, so we can keep all these meetings and stuff up and conference calls and our trainings. And we bought some Sharps containers. So right now, we're just waiting for another $4,500 to come in. But you can see the salary line is only through May 9th right now, so we're gonna be using more money for salaries, so. I just wanted to give you guys an update, so.
Very, very good. I like how that's allocated. Are we gonna do anything with PPE? Are we gonna try to obtain some PPE in case we do have a vaccine? And we want our volunteers to be well-equipped and?
Yeah, we've been doing some research, but mostly through the fire chief, because he has all the ins for where to get it. And I believe that is being arranged, I guess, as we speak, that we'll be able to be placing that order. He has enough to get us going, and we have some supplies here. But it's not enough to do the entire town, so. But in theory, nobody does. So if FEP decides to roll it out, they're gonna send us a trailer with what we need in it, so, in theory. So, you know, the only other thing that's gonna be popping up here on supplies, was like $350, is a drop box here at Old Town Hall, so people can drop stuff for us, because right now, they're putting it on a picnic table and putting a rock on it, and we gotta go outside and all that. So there's gonna be a drop box at the front door, so that people can leave the stuff there, because there's a drop box at Town Hall, but that's a really long way to go, so.
That all sounds good. You did a great job with this, by the way.
Thank you, but it was the emergency prep committee. It was, there was a lot of bodies involved in it. It wasn't just.
This is true.
And Code Red, I do have to throw thanks out to the police, the dispatchers. They spent a lot of time researching, came up with the system. And it's a great system. We've been trained in it, we love it. Brett, our selectman, has been instrumental in getting it out on Facebook and on the town website. And I know we're jumping around on the agenda, but we've got several hundred people have already signed up. We're gonna be doing more advertising of it soon, but that hopefully will be rolling out next week.
Just reminded me to sign up.
Did everybody get their card, by the way?
I didn't get mine yet.
Yeah, I think they're going, like some each, some people are getting them each day. So we've been getting calls from some people who don't have computers, and Roz is entering them into the system and creating users for them, so that they can get their notifications, so.
That's good.
Yeah, that's great, great.
Any other discussion on 3B, FEP grant?
No.
Moving on.
The fire department's working on the PPE, that's good. I wanna make sure we're prepared for hopefully what's coming down the road, you know?
Yeah, we're getting, they sent a few to me, that we're getting some outside companies sending us material, which is expected. But if we're going through the, I would prefer to go to somebody who has reputable vendors, like the, like the fire chief, so. We don't know.
Because we have, yeah, what do we have, five people on our call down drill? I mean, 25 people?
Or at least.
Forty-three.
Yeah, so I'm looking at that number, just to make sure those folks are supplied, you know? Depending on what it is, making sure they at least have it, you know?
Yeah, we definitely have enough PP to handle them. I dropped out. But no, we don't have enough to do, like.
I just stopped the video for a minute.
Three thousand.
Yeah, of course, yeah. All right, great, thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to 3C, trash bag price increase. We discussed this quite a bit at one or two meetings ago about increasing for 25% increase on small and a 50% increase on large, bringing them to $1 and $2. The only thing that came up was how we were gonna roll it out. And we had some discussion with it when I was in the office the other day, and we were thinking June 1st.
June or July 1st, yep. I'd probably go with July 1st. This start of the fiscal year makes it a little easier, I think.
That makes sense.
Okay, the, the only thing I, I think is that we only supply our contractors, selling them what they normally buy, because they're gonna try to buy as much as they can before the price increase. And we're gonna be on balance.
The vendors make the same profit irregardless, so it's the vendors, it doesn't matter to them. Oh, that's true, they're buying them at a cheaper price. Never mind, forget what I just said.
Yeah, and that's my only concern is, so I think, I think we should limit it them to what they normally buy within the, like, Anna First, for example, they buy 40 cases or whatever they buy in the, what, a month or two weeks? How quickly did it go through 40 cases?
And it's been about once a month, maybe once every three weeks. So if we keep them to what they previously ordered, it's, you know, we can't.
You could do that, you could look back at their history and just, they're only allowed to buy what they bought last year at this time, you know?
Yeah, the other alternative is we don't give them notice, and we just give them like a week's notice kind of thing, or the price is going up today, and the next order will be, you know, the new price.
Well, everybody, everybody needs to know that the price is going up, so.
That's why I was thinking June 1st. As a beginning date.
Doesn't matter to me. Let me just throw this out for you, though, is our board just gave us his numbers. And he's basically running for trash, it's like 23% higher than usual, based on his daily, his weekly tonnage. He's running about 23, because everybody's cleaning out the houses right now, so.
Yeah, everybody's home.
And recycling is up 18% too, so.
Yeah, because everybody has all that stuff that they get rid of now, you know?
Did everybody see that, or is that backwards?
No.
Can't see it?
Yeah, so it doesn't really matter, it's, June 1st is fine.
Yeah, we'll create a notice and we'll put it on the appropriate social media and we'll notify the companies.
How's this? Can you read that, Matt?
Yeah, that's good.
So I figured the vendors, we'll give this to all the vendors, they can put it on their doors, so everybody knows. We posted it at Town Hall, we posted on the Facebook pages and all that, so. Oh, yeah, look, June 1st, because that was the day we had talked about, so.
I know we've discussed this at very great length over some time, but, you know, when we look to other towns, and again, just having, having that curbside service, that's, you know, an additional cost as well. But, you know, the $2 a bag for large bags, that's still within what any other town, if not still cheaper than, than a lot of other towns are charging that have curbside for, for that size bag, so, you know, and I, I'll be interested to see what Taunton does now. I mean, Taunton's been $2 a bag for some years now, and they actually had their own landfill still. And now that that's closed, I'm sure that, that price is going to substantially increase.
They're talking about $6 a bag now.
Yeah, they have to offset a serious budget gap now. So at least we have something in place and a contract in place. And unfortunately, no, the $1.50 a bag instead of the $2 for the large just really isn't sustainable. And it's been quite some time since the, the bags gone up. So I think that it's definitely necessary and more than justified across the board. That's, that's all I have. And June 1st is fine, June, June 1st, July 1st, it doesn't make much of a difference to me, so.
Okay. And I think we are, we'll probably look at this every few years, instead of waiting 10 years each time before trash.
I think at, at the max, probably every five years, it should be fully revisited. If not, every time that contract renews with, with Borges. I think that should be reviewed for sure. That would be appropriate, just to see where we're at and, you know, adjust accordingly.
Yeah, because we went up pretty high this year with Borges, but he was still the lowest bidder, so.
Getting the big pirates to recycling, you know, so.
Yep, yep. They actually, I don't know if you guys were on a budget meeting, but they wanted us to look at getting the containers.
Said containers each individual house, like the buckets with the lids for the arm. But obviously, Borges doesn't have an ability to pick those up, so.
No. But we're still, that's not gonna be here for a couple of years when his contract runs out, so. We'll, maybe after this, I'm hoping we can.
Usually, and I think it might have been part of, I remember, right, part of our contract discussions, where we put it out for bid, was, was that trash barrel thing, you know? Again, a lot of companies are going to that automated lift system and the special barrels. And I think the gist of it was, you know, if a company were to come in that utilizes those barrels, that the town has to absorb some of that cost of those barrels. So a lot of things to look at, I think, you know?
And there's grant money to buy those barrels too, so.
Right.
But we gotta have everything in place to line it up.
Yeah, you're, you're the truck to actually do it, yeah. We're not, we're not there, even close, yeah.
No, so once we can get back together, we'll put it on the agenda and discuss for them, so.
Okay.
I know, I know, we talked about, the discussion for next time, but every other week with the recycling and?
He gave, he gave us a price on that when we did the contract, and yeah, so we can go over it all.
So he, so that was in the contract?
No, it was when we put it out to bid, that was, he gave us prices for both, so.
Okay.
But, so, we're looking for a motion at this point?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to increase the back prices to a large $20 and small $10 effective June 1st, 2020.
Second of all, motion, second of motion.
That's per package, right? Package of 10.
For all, yeah.
All right, motion is made, seconded, what am I, who's?
You sound like a robot.
Yeah, Tom, you faded out, say it again.
Kevin?
Uh, I'm sorry.
Oh, roll call, vote.
Yeah, Matt?
Yeah, in favor.
Okay, I'm also in favor unanimously, so, all right, guys.
Just for clarification, again, that one's a $2 a bag for large bags and $1 a bag for small bags.
Correct. How about the Rabies Clinic, new date?
Rabies Clinic, the new date, but then, because we obviously had to postpone it out of April. We are now at June 27th, and it'll be happening at the animal shelter over on Tremont Street.
All the same conditions apply, right?
The same, yeah, it was just a new date, so we just wanted to give people the information.
Everybody will have to follow, you know, current protocols at that time, social distancing, masks on, happy jazz.
Yeah, we got it at the bottom, both social distancing, but right, we may have to implement some more rules. Yeah, we got it at the bottom, both social distancing, but right, we may have to implement some more rules at the day of, but we'll wait and see what happens after, man.
Everything's changing every week, so we'll see. But that's good.
Oh, hazardous waste stays June thirteenth at the transfer station. That hasn't changed. It's always been that date, so.
All be the same thing, I I think uh unfortunately, it's a little easier with that because it's one card at a time usually, but.
Okay. Hey, hey, just to warn everybody, um this is my personal Zoom account because the town was using theirs for the selectmen meeting, so it's only a forty-minute time limit, so if the meeting just stops, I'll send you another invite so you can continue. And uh so you just have to log back in and it'll only take about a minute or two that we'll be down, so.
I just got a notice. It's been continued on my screen.
I didn't get it on mine.
Anyone else get that?
Well, it would only be the host to get. I didn't see it. The host might have got it, so whatever, we'll keep going, so.
Okay. Maybe we'll be done anyway.
Oh, yeah.
You might as well go ahead and talk about Code Red.
The rabies clinic?
You or Roz or?
We did do the rabies clinic. Did you not hear?
What time? What time is it?
Two to three P M.
Okay.
Okay.
We've already um voted on it, correct, I think?
Yeah.
Prior to changing it, we don't have to vote again.
Nope.
Okay, going with the new business. I think we're all set with that. Um Code Red, wanna?
Yeah, Code Red, um I think I already covered that. If anybody's got any specific questions about the system, I will say we got several hundred users in there now and every day the number keeps going up. The filings are hitting different days of the town, so every day we get more, so. Yeah, and we're going to be uh using part of the Code Red system. The reason why we chose it is Bristol County is already using it. And because of that, because and we're in Bristol County, we got like a half price price. And uh so Bristol County already has every phone number in Bristol County in there, so we're going to be sending out a call on Tuesday to everybody whose call is in Dayton, basically telling them, sign in. There's also going to be a a text number they can, like a five-digit number, and you text Dayton to that number and it automatically links you right in, so. And we'll probably put that out on that flashing sign once they're done with the water main on Sinister Street and on the sign out in front of Old Town Hall here. We're going to be getting the information out, so.
That's good.
Good stuff.
Anybody else, anything to ask, discuss? Okay, moving on, our retract. I think you've done that, right?
Well, it's done. Um the the question is now is we still have grant money left over from last year and we were going to use it for recycling audit, which obviously now is not the time to do the recycling audit. And it's also out there about uh mattress bins and cardboard compactors and there's grant money for all that kind of stuff. I don't know if we really want to get too deep into it now because obviously, you know, it it's a lot of information. We talked to Tom Ferry to see what he wants. Right now he seems to be okay, but if we're talking about changing, the way we're going to do recycling in town or trash, now it becomes a bigger discussion, so I think when we get back together and we talk about trash, we're going to be talking about transfer station and um some of these grants, so.
The uh the grant money is good for two years. They don't like people to hoard it, but if we're going to have a big purchase such as containers, at least partial pay on them.
Yeah, right now fifty-four hundred dollars is what we have, so it's not a hoarding at fifty-four hundred, but yeah.
Well.
Yep, Roz is asking if we need to be applying now for the for the grants and um the grant money is available, so we're going to need to put in for it. But we need to know what we need and that's like I say, a bigger discussion, so. Um I can send out to everybody all the retract grants that are available and everybody can go in and check them out and see what you think, but we got to get them involved in that discussion, so.
Well, the one for uh solid waste, I mean for recycling, it'd be about the same as last year, I would suspect.
Well, but we don't know how much money the state's going to have this year, so.
Yeah, probably none. But we'll see. Okay. I see. Okay, we're going to move on to 4C about a smoking.
So we have a uh business in town that is selling, currently selling flavored tobacco. He wants to continue to sell flavored tobacco, but he does not want to have a smoking bar where people are actually smoking in the store. And um we reached out to Seth Baker, who's the tobacco quarter, and he said, no, the only way you can sell flavored tobacco is if they're consuming it in the store.
It's the law.
So I just wanted the board to be aware of where it was at. Um we also have a there's um I think a couple of the retail stores that are selling flavored tobacco and smaller and we're going to have to be going and telling them, no more flavored tobacco, but I'm assuming Seth is going to give us kind of notification to go around.
June first is the uh the big rollout day for remainder of the tobacco uh regulations, if you will, from the state with all the flavored bans and um like that, so. At June, after June first, I think unfortunately, they're all going to have to be visited and that'll be in that. The the state was pretty clear on their guidelines regarding the tobacco, so. No, it's not not a local issue. It's state issue. They don't, those don't want to comply. It's it's going to be a state, state issue.
And and the fines are pretty steep, so.
Very. I think it's like one thousand, two thousand, three thousand, or one thousand, five thousand, something like that. Yeah, it's it's substantial.
It's one, two, and five.
Yeah. So it's fine. I would just say, reach out to them again, just say, hey, this is what it is. Here's a here's a copy of the regs. June first, that's it, you know? I guess that's the only thing you can do.
Yeah, that's why I'm we're going to try to spend some time next week down at the office to uh because they're kind of uh to the wall on on work with this COVID and ignore around at least the one for uh guidelines and so, so.
As long as you're wearing a mask, yep.
As long as I wear a mask, yeah, I do anyway, even in there. See?
And when you come in here, we put our masks on, yep.
Okay, where are we in here? Okay, we have a flavored tobacco on public input. Anybody got anything they want to bring up?
I will. This meeting was posted on the uh the website and everything, so people could have clicked on the link and joined right in, so, but we haven't had anybody else try to get in except for.
Real time?
Yeah, real time.
Oh, no kidding?
Yep, so Tim Ryan's was the only one who tried to get in, but obviously he needed the phone number, which we forgot to post and we'll correct that for the next meeting, so.
I I have a question, so do you think we could have a, are we looking at a meeting next week probably? After the governor's announcement?
I think we're gonna need one, even if we postpone it or cancel it, I think we need to schedule it.
Wednesday, six P M, same time, same place.
That work for you, Kevin?
Uh next Wednesday?
Six P M, same Zoom calling, yep.
What day?
Wednesday.
Can't do it. That's our planning board public hearings.
Wednesday, yeah.
So is there another day that works for somebody? Tuesday? Well, Tuesday might be too quick. Thursday?
Thursday's good.
Thursday actually doesn't work for me.
Okay.
You think Tuesday's too early?
Well, maybe not. I mean.
Yeah, I I got another meeting at seven Tuesday. We can either do it before or after.
Can you do be earlier than six o'clock for anybody?
Yeah, I can do it earlier, like five.
Yeah, if we do five, that'll be more than enough time for Matt to do what he's got to do, so. How about you, Tom?
Yeah, if you want to do it on five on Wednesday, that's good.
Oh, five on Wednesday or five on Tuesday?
Five on any day.
Okay.
Any day, anytime, but six P M on Wednesday.
Let's stick with Wednesday because that's our normal office hours anyway, so.
Okay, fine.
Okay, five.
Do I hear a motion or do we need one? Okay.
Yeah, the agenda will just be discussion regarding uh the governor's reopening reopening uh guidance and and how it'll pertain to the town or something like that. That's it.
And then also in in conjunction with the town reopening, right, so.
Is that a motion?
Motion.
Second.
What was the main second? Is all in favor, Kevin?
Aye.
Nah.
Aye.
I myself too. Okay, we may have a lot to discuss or nothing to discuss depending on what we get for guidelines next week.
We're just trying to stay ahead of the game, that's all.
Yep. Okay, uh discuss payroll, which did the bills pay during COVID? So about payroll.
Uh yeah, she's she sent it over.
Yes, there's nothing new to report beyond what she's been sending you every week.
Okay. And we actually, we looked at your payroll when we just.
All right, so um as I said at the last meeting, Corona, Corona, Corona. Um it's like a full-time thing. It's first thing in the morning, it's the weekends, it's nights, um it's conference calls, meetings, et cetera. In the meantime, we're trying to keep up with contractors and subject systems and inspections. They've had to wait a little longer than they would have liked sometimes. Stormwater reviews got pushed to the back burner. We're doing our darnest. We've reached out to, well, Mallory reached out to us and asked us if we could use any help. They've got some people in the office who are not working. They're at home. But if she was to bring them in, are there any tasks that they can help us out with to help alleviate some of the stress? Like Tom says, he's coming in next week to help. We're working on a list of things that other people can do for us to help out, like for example, the transfer station turn-in sheet. We just have to type the list of all the checks and stuff like that, so. We're trying to come up with stuff to pass on and Mallory's trying to find who's going to be the ones going to be doing our work, so we're trying to help with that. Otherwise, nobody's been yelling at us, nobody's been screaming. They've been very cooperative with us and very understanding, um and so it's been nice. I appreciate all your support and the police and the fire and the town administrator and the board of selectmen. Everybody's supportive on this, so we're we're in good shape.
Nice.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Matt, that wasn't meant to um be um a dig on you. Matt, Matt doesn't have somebody doing the maven for him, so in his town, he's doing all the contract tracing plus talking to all the restaurants and all the retail stores. We have a town nurse to do it for me, so.
So you're saying he doesn't get to sleep much?
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay. Great job, everybody. I uh we have a great town. I need the hours to read that.
Any correspondence? Nope.
No.
But we have one.
Say we're up to approval of minutes. Are we ready? Okay.
Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the minutes for February twelfth, two thousand twenty, March eleventh, two thousand twenty, and March twenty-third, two thousand twenty.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to approve the minutes of February twelfth, March eleventh, and March twenty-third, two thousand twenty. I have March eleventh.
I'm sorry, say that again. Your microphone comes in and out.
I would like to hold back on the March eleventh minutes. Uh we have some enlisted.
I'm not hearing any of it, Tom.
Okay, we had an individual come in.
Oh, there you go.
His name somehow will please minutes and put him off.
I think I think Roz had changed that, right?
No, this is the name of the person that came in from Dayton, Rehoboth. Remember when he sat down? He didn't he didn't get his last name and we actually were trying to find his last name.
I did edit that and we said representative from Dayton, Rehoboth, from the high school.
Okay. So you did edit it?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Back here.
Hold on, Tom, hold on, hold on. Stop, stop, stop. Your microphone is like, it sounds really funny. I'm sorry.
Okay.
You want to hold off? Because I I I remember I I made a comment to Roz about it and it's the same thing you said. She just couldn't figure out the last name, but she put representative instead.
No, Ross said that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, she did revise it and send it to everybody, but if you haven't seen it, we can hold it or you can vote on it with that one change, which instead of the name, it says a representative from the high school, so.
Okay, no, that's good. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, then let's vote. Oliver, Kevin?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Aye for me also. Carrie's?
Remember any else, Dad? Well.
Then let's adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor? Kevin?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye for me. Todd?
I don't get a vote.
Okay. Hey, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, guys.